Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the Arlington Select Board meeting for Monday, April 11, 2022. I am Select Board Chair Leonard Diggins. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Mrs. Mahan? Can't hear you.
Sorry, here. I'm unmuted now.
Okay, here you now. Mr. Hurd?
Yeah.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
And this is, of course, who will not be joining us tonight. Saif, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Mr. Taptalane?
Yes.
Mr. Heim?
Yes.
And Select Board Administrator Ashley Meyer is participating, but not as panelists. Tonight's meeting on this like board is being conducted remotely consistently with an act signed into law of February 15, 2022, that extends certain COVID-19 measures. The act includes an extension until July 15, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The governor's order, which is referenced with agenda materials on the town's website for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Before we begin, permit me to offer a few notes. First, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom. It is being recorded and is also being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. Persons participating by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others and that if you wish to participate, you are asked to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. All participants are advised that people may be listening, do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and persons watching ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials also found on town's website using the notice agenda platform. And finally, each vote tonight will be taken by roll call. So without short agenda, I'm confident we'll get all the town's business done tonight, and I'll now turn to the next item on the agenda, which is item two, and acknowledgement. I would like to read and learn acknowledgement that the board supported last spring and town meeting approved through a resolution which is also contained on the town's website. We acknowledge that the town of Arlington is located on the ancestral lands of the Massachusetts tribe, the tribe of indigenous people from whom the colony, province, and Commonwealth have taken their names. We pay our respects to the ancestral bloodline of the Massachusetts tribe and their descendants who still inhabit historic Massachusetts territories today. And I'll turn to item three on tonight's agenda, and that is the consent agenda. So I will start with Mr. Helms for motion and or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move approval.
And Mr. Hurd?
Second, just for people watching, you might want to just read what's on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I appreciate that. So on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from from three meetings, March 21, March 28, and April 4. So so now that we know, Mr. Hurd, you seconded, right? Thank you. This is behind.
No question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And no questions or comments from me. So we'll ask Mr. Heim to take roll call.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Helms?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's a four zero vote.
Okay, and next on the agenda, let me pull it up. So we have discussion and approval of the draft Select Board report to town meeting. And for that, we turn to Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What's before you is a draft select report that reflects the votes and comments that you've already entered. We got into the practice of doing this just as providing one final opportunity for the board to review its votes and comments before they get submitted to town meeting. This year, it's a little bit more straightforward because we don't have any change in members of the board for any reason, which we're all happy about. I do want to draw your attention to one vote that we received some feedback on and one vote and comment that wasn't finalized in previous version. So if you'll turn your attention to Article 16, Bylaw Amendment to Noise, Bylaw Regarding Gas Power Leak Blowers. After your vote and your approval of the vote and comment, Deputy Counsel Cunningham and I received a little bit of feedback and input from the resident petitioners who were hoping that something could be clarified. Neither Mr. Cunningham or I thought Attorney Cunningham or I thought was a substantive change. If you if you allow it, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to give Mr. Cunningham an opportunity, since he's here with us, to explain what's highlighted in yellow. You'll basically see two similar versions of the same paragraph under the changes to Section 3D Daytime Only proposed in a vote. And I'll let Attorney Cunningham explain what the sort of issue was as the resident petitioners saw it. We think it's consistent with the previous vote, but we want to make sure. Obviously, if you want to stay with the language that we had originally approved, that's fine. But it's something that they felt was clearer with some relatively modest modifications. So, Mr. Chair, I can turn it over to Deputy County Council Cunningham. That'd be terrific.
Yes, please do. Please, Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, as Attorney Heim outlined, we had a conversation with the group, the proponents of this article. And in particular, if you look at Article 16, number two, I put the proposed new text in yellow, which is directly below the original text that was last before this board. Essentially, the change amounts to a difference between for commercial users, they would be allowed to use the gas-powered leaf blowers during the transition phase from May 31, as you can see there, instead of June 15. And then there's also some clarification in the next in the next paragraph on the following page that I think was just consistent with what the board approved previously, but it's a little bit more clear, I think. In my view, I think the changes regarding the dates for commercial users during the phase out period are not substantive changes and are consistent with the board's direction to this office regarding what you wanted to see. So but I would defer to any questions or concerns about those changes. I don't I don't think that they changed what you voted on the last time I was here talking about this issue, but I'll leave that to the board to decide.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Anything else, Mr. Heim?
Yes. So in addition to that, I just wanted to note that you'll see highlighted in your draft report, the revolving funds. I just needed the updated numbers for the revolving funds. I will update those along with the board office. They're highlighted just to show what it looks like in the Select Board vote, but I haven't yet received the updated table. So as soon as I get the updated table, I will make sure that the figures for the balance ending in 2021 is reflected. And then finally, Article 77, you may recall, was the last part of a sort of trio of measures the board approved with respect to rodenticides in Arlington. I tried to take the proponents warrant articles and some of the materials they'd submitted to me previously and translate it into a resolution. It's fairly straightforward. It essentially urges the town to continue to develop its current work and to develop and implement an integrated pest management policy wherever possible for town-owned properties. As the board is aware, there are a bunch of different entities that own or manage town properties. While most of the town properties are managed by the town manager, this resolution is essentially encouraging all Arlington municipal landowners, the school department, the town manager, conservation, parks and rec to use integrated pest management and not to use second generation anticolegone rodenticides, which, to my understanding, we are not using or not using unless it's absolutely the last resort as of now anyway. So if the board would like to vote to approve what we've put in front of you, that would cover Article 77, depending on how the board feels about it, the changes that we talked about to Article 16. And you should just know that we'll include some of the appendix materials that are referenced and update those revolving front tables. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. And so do you recommend that we vote once, mean on the whole report, or do that we vote three times based on the changes that you've made?
I would say once in the well, the board can make whatever motion wants, but but I would say that voting once is sufficient for our purposes. And obviously, if there's any other tweaks or changes that members of the board would like to see made to the report, that's part of why we provided it too, to make sure that it reflects accurately all the votes and comments that we previously submitted to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. I just figured I'd help out Mr. Mr. Hurd, to whom I'm going to turn now for the motion and or comments. Mr. Hurd?
So just looking at this leaf blow language, and I just, again, I mean, I think we went through this last time, and the language that's so now I'm reading this language that says during the transition period, May 31st of 2022, commercial users cannot use gas-powered leaf blowers during certain portions of the year. Is that what it's saying now? Because we've gone through this the last meeting, and my understanding was until during the transition period, there's really no change in when they can use the gas-powered leaf blowers. Is that is that what the language is still saying?
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Hurd, I believe it's there's a prohibition period with the restrictions that are outlined in Section A. So during the phase out, they would be permitted to use the gas-powered leaf blowers, but subject to the restrictions that are listed in Section 2A. I think the big change that the proponents were asking us to make, which I don't think is a huge change, but was regarding the the prohibition from May 31 to June 15, that that date change was the that's really the crux of what we changed there.
So during the so say, in 2022, once this gets enacted, after June 15, they cannot use the leaf blowers? Like in July, they can't use the leaf blowers?
Mr. Cunningham?
Correct.
So this is, I mean, that's the part of the discussion that we had in the last meeting, and I was assured that that until 2025, that there were no restrictions on the months. I just, I mean, I have to change my vote on this one, because I think that's too quick to as of June 15, they have to figure out how to rework their businesses for the summer months. My understanding, based on the discussion that we had at our last meeting, was that until during the phase out period, that they could use the leaf blowers at any point. There weren't any blackout months. And I thought that's what was confirmed, and this seems to be pretty dramatically different than my understanding. So I mean, I'll listen to what my colleagues have to say, but I I'm just saying that the language that I see here is pretty dramatically different than what I was understanding in front before. Maybe I was just misunderstanding, but that was the point of what I was trying to get at. And the last meeting, when we discussed this, was that it my thought at the time was represented that there were no blackout months for the use of these. And that's what my original concern was that with the language that was originally proposed by the proponents, it was, you know, we're months away from landscapers having to to readjust how they do their work. And I mean, I just don't agree with the with the idea that they don't use them in the summer, or that they don't need them in the summer. They only use them during spring and fall cleanups. So this is, I'm just saying, this is pretty dramatically different from what I had understood this just at our last meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mrs. Mahan?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You can hear me, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sorry, it doesn't say on my phone if I'm muted or not. I agree with Mr. Hurd. It was my understanding at the last meeting, it was talking about transition and dates and commercial use, and it was 2023. Then it was agreed that it would run parallel to the Lexington proposal, which is 2025, and that, as Mr. Hurd stated, that that would give enough time for commercial landscapers or any commercial businesses using them, time to transition. So if I could, through you, Mr. Chair, ask Attorney Cunningham, if we choose not to adopt the proposed language, which means it defaults back to what is before us? Am I correct that that's what the case would be? The date of 2023 gets changed to 2025, and commercial landscapers have until then?
Mr. Cunningham?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Mahan. I think that the original, my understanding of what the original discussion was from the proponents and what was before this board previously was that the dates of prohibition were designed to allow commercial users and residents, but commercial users on one one less year, to use gas-powered leaf blowers during spring and fall cleanup. So that's what the the May 31 date versus June 15. Originally, what I understood before the board with the board vote on originally was that they were going to prohibit the use of gas-powered leaf blowers essentially during the summer season, when commercial users and most people don't use them anyway. But that they would allow for during the transition phase for commercial users to use them up through June 15 was what we originally talked about. And then the proponents were the ones who reached out and asked to they thought they felt that was within the spirit of what the board voted to move that back to May 31. So a commercial user, for instance, right now, could continue to use a gas-powered leaf blower up through May 31 to do their spring cleanup. And then again, after September 15 to conduct their fall cleanup. But if you if the board thinks that's if I didn't properly explain that, I apologize last time, or if that was unclear, and that's my fault, we'll deal with deal with that as as the board sees fit.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mrs. Mahan. Please, please. I saw Mr. Heim's hand up, but I will.
No, I'll go to Attorney Heim. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Heim.
I just wanted to to make clear that when we, if you look at the, there's two paragraph twos, so you can see what the original language and amendment proposed to the board would look like. The use of gas-powered leaf blowers prohibited between June 15 and September 15, except in accordance with the transition and phase out schedule as set forth below. And then the phase out schedule is set forth below, which basically talks about commercial and municipal users' transition period. And it highlights that during the transition period from May 31, 2022, through March 15, 2025, gas-powered leaf blowers may be operated by commercial landscape companies and the town during the following times. So that was what we originally proposed to you. The major thing that was sort of changed is there was a little bit more detail put in basically a single bullet point. So just so you can compare and contrast the revised language with the original proposed amendment. So I just want to be clear that those two things are there for you to compare if it's useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess with that understanding, I would my preference would be to not adopt the amendment by the proponents, which further limits the time out timeline posed in the bylaw from June back to May. I'd like to stick with the original language, and I'd be interested to hear from all my colleagues, including Mr. Hurd. And I'd like to just state on the record, and what I'm hearing is that commercial landscapers have until 2025 to ultimately be in conformance with the bylaw, but that the original language, and I'm just doing this from memory, because I can't, I tried to print, and I couldn't. Basically, the difference between the language and time of hours is that for homeowner residents, there are some Sunday hours, and we are a little more gracious with residents by perhaps about two hours versus commercial landscapers. So I guess where I am right now is I'd like to stick with the original language with the understanding that the landscapers have until 2025 for the penultimate date for the transition. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So Mr. Mr. Helms?
Yeah, thank you. Through Mr. Chair, through you, I'd like to ask if any of my colleagues, either of our legal counsel, are aware of the Lexington bylaw, which was not only passed, but affirmed by by the public and referendum. Did it also contain an immediate prohibition of gas-powered leaf blowers during the summer months outside of the cleanup season?
So will one of our attorneys raise their hands for this one? Mr. Cunningham, thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I couldn't unmute myself. I don't have it in front of me, Mr. Helms, but I I believe it did. I think this is substantially similar to the language contained in the Lexington bylaw that was passed last fall and approved by their voters this spring.
Thank you. Yeah, that's my recollection as well. And I thought that was my understanding of kind of what we were we were doing. I think the ambiguity is just in stating the prohibition and then saying that there are exceptions. And I think maybe there's just some understandable confusion. It's good that we're having this discussion now, obviously, so that we're in our own minds. That, you know, that that there is a there's a phase out period in the transition period, but the transition period is really, if I'm understanding this correctly, from from, you know, being able to use gas-powered leaf blowers, but but only outside this cleanup time, which is, you know, I think the intent of that was was when they're really most needed and used, and that they would need to use if they use blowers at all in the summer months, that they would need to use that use electric ones. Is that is that kind of currently whether or not we go with the amended language, the amended date, I should say, that's that's kind of what was originally before is the last couple versions of this we saw. The last version is only just one version.
Excuse me. Was that a question?
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's just kind of confirming my understanding that that's that's correct, that that the change in the date being proposed now in the in the highlight doesn't really change the substance of this. Mr. Cunningham, is that 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 are they asked us a better way? I'm sorry. I mean, I used to be back in Zoom already. Is the other highlight that we have on the on the date change, is that adding a prohibition of gas-powered leaf blowers during the summer months? Or was that already there? And what's the question is, is the date?
So so I think that was addressed to Mr. Cunningham.
It was through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Helms. It essentially sets back the clock two weeks, which I think the the original language that the board saw did prohibit the use of gas-powered leaf blowers during the summer months, but just had the summer starting on June 15 instead of May 31.
Okay, you think that's that's helpful. That was much better than I tried to formulate it earlier on. Yeah, so I think that was my understanding as well. I think, you know, we may need to have a discussion about whether we're all of us are still there or not. I'm still, I think, basically comfortable with that, just just because in the summer months, the need for 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 these devices is not as severe. And I think also, you know, my interest in this was making this as parallel with what is going to what will be in effect in Lexington imminently upon AG review, because I think that has an industry-wide effect, you know, many, not all, but there's certainly overlap in the contractors. And also know that the town of Arlington itself is requiring use of electric equipment anyway. So I guess I'm somewhat less concerned because of all that, but certainly respectful of my colleagues' further views. And Mr. Chair, I think right now we're discussing leaf blowers. I just wanted to, if we're going to do this kind of all in one vote, and that that may change. I had one small addition to another article, just want to kind of bookmark. I can either do that one now or kind of hold off if we want to kind of keep talking about this one.
Yes, if we could hold off, Mr. You know, I appreciate that. I saw Mr. Heim's hand go up. Do you still want to say something, Mr. Heim?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify, and again, I think that this is a healthy thing. Obviously, the way that we had envisioned the vote created some competing interpretations of it. So that's part of, I think, why the proponents wanted us to come back with the different language. And I think it's part of why members of the board are expressing some concern about what was voted on. But I do want to make it clear, and we don't Arlington certainly doesn't have to do what Lexington does at all. But what Lexington did is already been approved by the Attorney General's Office, and it essentially restricts use of gas-powered leaf blowers from March 15 to May 31, and again, from September 15 to December 30, December 30. And that is effective May 31, 2022. So that is that the Lexington, I think, I think where there's a little bit of disconnect is that there may be some disconnect on whether or not Arlington was following the Lexington model or not. So obviously, this is up to the board, and I apologize for having it be a little bit ambiguous as to what was being captured by the first vote and comment. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. That's very helpful. I think, did you mean to say for Lexington? And I realize that you were town council for Arlington, not Lexington. So that their prohibition starts in March or in May for the at the front of that season? Their prohibition starts goes from March 15 to May 31, and September 15 to December 30 is my understanding. And it's effective May 31, which is. Okay, I see. So it means that it means that this summer it would not apply. That would also be true for any action Arlington has to take, because obviously, the Attorney General's Office won't render a decision until until September. So the summer prohibition were to stand in a town meeting were to, you know, approve that the it couldn't apply this summer anyway. So there would be at least be a year if for a company that wanted to use this during the summer period, you know, they would have at least a year to to provide for that equipment. Correct. Because of the cycle. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, yes, please.
Correct. It would not apply until it was approved by the Attorney General's Office. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's all my comments, my questions on the on this article. So if we have a chance to return the other, then so it'd be great.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Helms. So back to you, Mr. Hurd?
I mean, I guess I'll apologize for just not understanding the language. I thought my question was clear at the last meeting, but apparently I wasn't. And so my question was, is there was to confirm that there was no blackout months until the 2025? And I must not have asked it correctly, because we got an affirmative answer at that time. So it is what it is. We already voted on it. I'm not going to reinvent the wheel over it. I think having this come regardless of the the Attorney General's timeframe, I think if Tom meeting passes this, it's going to be a nightmare for the Arlington Police Department, who are going to get a lot of calls over the summer, because which residents really know when the Attorney General approves a bylaw amendment. I think a lot of residents are going to be calling on contractors, because they know that it was passed at town meeting. So it's my fault for not understanding. I'll take the heat for that and move on, I guess.
I just mean, just for the sake of thoroughness, I mean, I want to circle back to Mrs. Mahan. You know, all you you haven't raised your hand. Do you want to add any more?
Um, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just that I think ultimately, when we get to town meeting, I'm guessing there's going to be a few substitute motions that speak to different parts of this. So so I agree with Mr. Hurd's comments, but also agree with my colleague's sentiments to get this before town meeting and and have the very active and lively discussion and debate that we'll have and see what we end up with in the end. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. And so in continuing our discussion about the draft final report, Mr. Hurd, I'm sorry, Mr. Helms, you are death. I got off to a bad start. I got off to a bad start. And I think this might persist, you know, so.
I, uh, I consider that an honor and an upgrade personally, referred to as Mr. Hurt, one of our more thoughtful and collegial members. Um, I I just want to say a- a- on the last item, um, you know, I think, I think the confusion is just baked right in. It's not our our attorney's fault at all. I think that the complicated way of approaching this, um, engenders that confusion, and I, you know, so. Um, I I agree with with Mrs. Mahan. Ultimately, this is for Tom being to sort out, and you know, I'm also comfortable. I mean, I I I want my colleagues to feel like they know what they're running on and everything, but I think if we're, we have consensus to get this done. Um, let Tom meeting sort it out, and I I agree that there there's probably gonna be some suggestions for some some changes and tweaks to this. Uh, you know, let let the action move there. Um, I had a couple of, these are really small things, but on the, um, on the resolution. For the IPM strategy, uh, and thank you very much to our to our attorneys for, um. For writing that up and all the other work. They had a lot of writing to do this year, much more than usual, and they did a fine job. Um. This, because IPM integrated pest management is not really the same as organic, um. Pest control or 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 farming, which is something I'm no more of, uh, myself. I might suggest striking the word organic, and I might further suggest striking the word natural, simply because it doesn't have any legal meaning as far as I'm concerned. And in, um, agriculture and, um, in in these practices. And that because IPM, you know, has has a defined meaning by by standards in the industry, I think that might stand on its own just fine. To just to just go with that. Um, and the other thing, and that's just a suggestion, is back on, um. Article nineteen on, uh, the, um, proposal for Malliotsi Boulevard, um, and I cleared this with Mr. Heard, uh, privately. Um, I'd like to request, um, the addition of the minority viewpoint on the on the boat, um, just as follows. After the majority's position is explained, saying the minority believes that the novel nature of this proposal warrants a variance from back from past practice. So. Like to suggest that if my colleagues are comfortable with that.
So, um, so then I will, um, see what was the rotation here. I'll go to Mr. Heard, you know, and see how you feel about. Um, Mr. Helmets. Well, you he he consulted, I guess you're fine with it.
I'm all good with everything Mr. Helms said.
Okay, all right, um, um, Ms. Mahan.
Sorry, I must have bad reception. I have to keep hitting star six fifty times. Um, I guess I'll agree with both my colleagues heard, heard, I mean, Helms, um, and, uh. Uh, fine with that, and, um, I guess on, um, article. Sixteen, the leaf blower. Or an article, um, my, if I made a motion, well, I'd like to make a motion and then have my colleagues discuss it. Excuse me, move approval, um, subject to the amendment by, um, our counsel, Mr. Helms. Colleague, Mr. Helms, now I'm making him an attorney. There we go. As well as, um. An article sixteen, just because it seems like every time we change it, there's more confusion. I'd like to stick with the, um, original language that we. Um, discussed, um, again, recognizing it'll probably get changed at town meeting, so I'd like to move approval of the twenty twenty two select board. Report to town meeting as amended by Attorney. Heim and Cunningham, with the exception of article sixteen, I'm not adopting that language right now, but. To keep it the way it was that we discussed last week, um, as well as the amendment by, uh, Mr. Helms. And or, um, I would be open to if, um. Our chair or anyone else has some changes, but I'd like to put that motion on the table, um, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hurt. Um, any, um, comments, Mr. Um, is Helms?
Sounds good to me. Thank you very much.
Yes, well, you know. The great part about this one is that my colleagues have pretty much said everything, you know, and so I've taken it all in. I really have, um, nothing to add to the discussion. I see where everyone is coming from. In, um, with, um, the discussion on the leaf blowers, and with the recommended amendment to the resolution regarding. Um, striking organic, meaning natural, and and, um. And I'm blanking out on the last one, you know, Mr. Helms, what was that?
Oh, that that was, uh, adding the minority, uh. On the article nineteen.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. We definitely favor that, you know, so, so, um, so with, um, the. Motion by, um. Mrs. Mahan, eh, and the second by Mr. Hurt, um, Mr. Heim, can you take them?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to members of the board for your patience, and they're standing as we try to cultivate these votes together. Um, Mr. Hurt.
Yes.
Mr. Helmets.
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Dickens.
Yes.
It's a four zero, thank you.
Thank you, and and I will move on to the next item on the agenda. Item number five, which is the discussion in Pennsylvania, uh, authorization of virtual town meeting. Uh, we will hear from town moderator, Mr. Christiana.
Hi, Mr. Chair and Select Board. Uh, thanks for having me here tonight. Uh, Greg Christiana, Town Moderator, uh, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with the Select Board tonight in my capacity as town moderator. I'd like to summarize how I arrived at my decision to request a remote meeting, uh, and then happy to take any questions that you might have. Uh, last week I consulted with the town manager, town council, and the Director of Health and Human Services. And and others about our options for how to convene town meeting this year. Uh, some options that we discussed included. Town Hall, uh, other large indoor venues, like one of the gyms at the Arlington High School. Uh, the Arlington High School football field, uh, and remote participation using the virtual town meeting platform. That we've used twice during the pandemic. Uh, Town Council can speak to the legal criterion for me as moderator to make a request to the Select Board for town meeting to be held remotely. But to summarize, I would have to determine that it's not possible to safely assemble in person for town meeting. And that's my determination based on the conversations that I had last week, based on increasing COVID cases locally and leading indicators. That are trending in the wrong direction, uh, lack of indoor spaces large enough to allow sufficient distancing. And poor ventilation at town hall, which is difficult to remedy. I've asked. Ms. Banjorno, the Director of Health and Human Services, to attend tonight to weigh in on the input. That she gave me in our meetings last week, so that you can hear her insights unfiltered. I ask that you approve my request so that we can continue planning for virtual town meeting to provide a safe venue for all participants. In this very fluid and unpredictable situation. I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Miss Moderator. So are you saying that you would like for us to hear from this one journal now, or just if we have questions?
Uh, that's up to you.
Right. Well, uh, I would say if we have questions, and then we will bring her in, you know, if, um. She wants to speak, eh, maybe she can signal that in the chat and and, uh, the, um, town manager can let us know. Uh, that's the case, we will be happy to bring her in. And so I will start, um, with Mrs. Mahan.
Um, excuse me, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, if I could, I would like to ask the Health and Human Services Director. Um, to provide an explanation, um, of what she also explained to our town ma- moderator. And that, am I correct, that while we considered alternate sites such as the gymnasiums at the high school? That's really not, um, available to us for, um, a special and regular town meeting. And then my second question would be through the chair, either, um. Through the chair, through the chair, either to the town moderator and or town council, just because I've gotten some questions on it. Um, there has been discussion that, should the board vote? With the moderator, which I am going to do, for, um. The twenty twenty two regular and special town meeting, if there is one, to be conducted remotely. Um, there has been discussion that the first night of town meeting, the town meeting members would need to take a vote. Um, whether to, um, comport with that, agree with that, and, um. If they choose not to, then, um. How do we proceed from there? So I'd like to hear from, um, Ms. Banjorno. I'd like everybody else to ruminate on my question. A, is that something that town meeting members will take up as the first order of business? If so, um, if there is a vote not to do this remotely. Um, how we proceed from there, is there a default that? Even if there is a vote to come back to town hall, since it's not safe to do that. Um, does that mean the default is we still have to be remote anyway? So I guess maybe. Um, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, to hear from Ms. Banjorno, and then whomever you want to direct that second part of the question to. And I apologize if it's confusing, so, because I'm a little confused, and I'd like to get clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, Mrs. Mrs. Banjorno.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I met with, um, the new town moderator, the town manager and town council last week. Um, to inform them that the cases that we're seeing here in town, both the documented cases, um, that we're seeing, the lab reported cases through the state. As well as, um. The sewage data that we review, uh, daily, uh, shows that there's an increase in cases, um, in this region. So we are seeing an increase in COVID. Um, so I think that's the information I did provide to the town moderator. Um, to help inform his decision on whether or not to move forward with the, um, in-person versus remote, uh, town meeting. So I, that's really all I wanted to, I don't know if Adam wanted to expand on that.
Yeah, so, um, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chapley, did I see your hand go up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I I wanted to be responsive to the other part of, uh, Mrs. Mahan's question about the red gym. And we did inquire about both the gym and what would be the new auditorium. The new auditorium's audio visual equipment won't be ready in time for town meeting. And the red gym unfortunately has a series of volleyball games that conflicted with town meeting dates. The athletic director and the superintendent were willing to think about rescheduling one game or two, but rescheduling a whole series of games. Um, was too, you know, too far a bridge to cross to be able to access the red gym.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And, um, so, Mr. Heim, did you want to refer to the, uh, question regarding what happens? And if town meeting members do not want to vote not to do VTM.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, it's a good question and important question. So, um. Any of, so, uh, if the board were to agree with the moderator that town meeting should be conducted virtually or remotely. The first order of business that would happen, uh, and by the way, there are other procedure requirements. The board would issue a notice. There are certain things the town clerk would do. Um, we have to make sure that it's, uh, people within, uh, members of the public who are not town meeting members who want to watch town meeting. They send in a note to the moderator forty eight hours before town begins. We have to be able to make sure we give them access to follow along. We always make sure that it's broadcast on the ACMI, all that kind of stuff. But the first order of business at the town meeting will be to, uh, take a vote of those members present. About whether or not they will essentially agree to conduct town meeting virtually. If they do agree, then the meeting proceeds. They don't agree, there are really two options. One option is to reconvene town meeting in a physical location, uh, which is to say that. Because the warrant was initially noticed, and we did this with intent to make sure that town meeting had maximum flexibility. Uh, because the, uh, warrant does provide a location, the town meeting could vote to essentially. Uh, begin its deliberations at, uh, town hall, despite the risks that have been stated by the moderator and. Uh, presumably the Select Board, if we're getting to this point. The other option is essentially to dissolve town meeting and to post town meeting at a new location. Uh, the most likely scenario in that event, if it doesn't seem safe to, um. Uh, proceed with town meeting would be a version of town meeting that's somewhat similar to what we did in twenty twenty, which is essentially a town meeting. That's, uh, highly compact and condensed on the football field and takes care of the essential business that needs to be concluded before June thirty. So those are the two options. Uh, one would be to sort of forge ahead despite. Uh, the assessment of risk being a prize to town meeting members, and the other, uh, option would essentially be to dissolve the town meeting and renotice it. Um, for some location like the football field for what would probably have to be a, uh, highly truncated version of town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heim. You know, so, um, Mrs. Mrs. Mahan, are you satisfied? Do you?
Um, yeah, yes, I am, and I'd like to make a motion to move approval of, uh, the request of, um. Town moderator to conduct the regular and special twenty twenty two town meeting, uh, through VTM virtually.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan, you know, Mr. Mr. Helmets.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, oh, boy, here, now it's my turn. Perhaps that was deserved, if unintentional. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations, Mr. Moderator, on your election, and, uh, welcome to the big chair. This is, uh, this is where where it gets, uh, it gets real. Uh, I'd like to second the motion from colleague Mrs. Mahan. Uh, this is a hard decision. I don't think it's a decision anyone takes any pleasure in making. I like town meeting in person a lot. And I think that the reason I support this is just from the information that our, uh, Health and Human Services Chair just provided, and then that is in the moderator. Uh, that the the trends are are going up, and, you know, I think that just. You don't have to be a scientist to to just notice and observe that when when the wastewater data. When the seven day weighted average of positivity rises and the case reports rise, and all those things are happening right now. That those have preceded surges, and we know from other parts of the world and now other parts, you know, cities, Philadelphia just reinstated its mask main date. That it seems to me, it's a guessing game. None of us know for sure what will happen, including the experts, but that it seems likely. Then two or three weeks, it's gonna be more clear that this was a good call, you know, we don't know. We could find in two or three weeks that things are about the same, and then, you know, I think our problem. Is that we have to make a decision now, because there's preparations to make, and it's gonna be tight as it is, so we don't have the luxury of waiting to find out. Um, and my concern is participation. Um, I think even though we're very fortunate. That we have more treatments for COVID and that, um, many infections are not serious. That people still have to quarantine, so if we have. You know, a number of town meeting members, even even a modest number who have to, can't attend in person because they're quarantined, even if they're not in any serious danger. I have concerns about that just from a democratic participation point of view, when, when we have the option, when the state legislature has provided us the option. To meet remotely, uh, while we can. So, you know, I I I wouldn't say my my agreement is reluctant, I think. Only with regard to the circumstances. I want to make it clear that I don't, you know, love this idea. I don't think, I'm not sure anybody on the screen does. Um, so, um, so that's just kind of my thinking, and, um. You know, I just urge all, if Tommy members will absolutely have the voice, there's a legal reason why they need to make this decision. Um, but whatever the decision they do, you know, I hope that we can unite around our moderator and each other and, you know, get through this. Hopefully for the last time, um, as best we can, get it back to a more even keel of the pandemic receipts once again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Miss Helmets. Uh, Mr. Heim, I'm sorry, your hand go up?
I don't want to interrupt members of the board first. I just wanted to note that there were, if if, uh, the board was, uh, warm to it, uh, there was a second piece that I was hoping I could. Uh, recommend respectfully that we add on to, uh, the the motion, uh, regarding a notice to be issued by the board.
Okay, all right, I understand, you know, so it seems kind of, well, it seems like it's it's just, uh. A detail that doesn't really affect me, the. The tenor of the conversation, so, so we'll we'll come back to that. Uh, so, um, Mr. Mr. Hurt.
Wow, so I won't talk too long, I guess, because I can see where the board's voting, but. I mean, I'm just, I'm hard no one voting to approve the remote town meeting. I think. The past couple of years, it's just been a nightmare. Um, I I think a lot of people have left town meeting because of the experience they've had. I think it takes longer. And, I mean, I, I'm never gonna gonna be the one to tell tell someone not to, to. If they are, have a fear of the virus, not to tell them that they're wrong, or kind of push them in somewhere that they're not comfortable with. But I think we're two years into this. I think, you know, at the beginning. But I think we're two years into this. I think, you know, at the beginning, we always said, follow the science. And when we see an uptick, unless I'm misreading these figures that I'm getting online, the uptick is about just under 2% of positivity rate to now. It's 3% of positivity rate or 3% of people tested or testing positive is 240 hospitalizations, which right now, which I calculated to be point zero, 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 three, six of the population. I mean, I, I just think around us, people are getting back to life. I've been to Bruins games. I've been to high school hockey games. The kids, there was similar arguments when we're taking the mask off the kids and I haven't seen any. As far as I know, from my kid's school and people that I know that there hasn't been any outbreaks. For me, I would just much prefer the human interaction of being in person with somebody. And I think we can figure out a way to make people comfortable. People can, it can be areas of town meeting where people are comfortable, like they can sit closer to each other than this seats for people that have more fear or more hesitation about being in a public place near each other. People can wear masks if they want to. So I mean, for me, I just, the idea of enduring another full town meeting through the virtual platform is just too overwhelming for me to, to vote to, to support it. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Heard. So, Mr. Heim, I think now it's time to entertain that detail modification amendment to the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Diggins. It's not a, an amendment. It's as much as a, if the board is inclined to move towards authorizing a remote meeting, that the board would also approve that its office in consultation with the legal department would issue a notice regarding the change of venue from in-person to virtual town meeting consistent with chapter twenty-two, the Acts of 2022. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Right. So, so it doesn't affect the motion. And I'm, I'm not. So this is just a point of knowledge, a point of information.
I'm, I'm just asking that the, the board, if the board approves, then it also authorize and direct your office to send a notice to all town meeting members that basically it's attested to by the clerk and includes the moderator's letter. Thank you, sir.
Got you. I understand. Thank you. Thanks for the repetition of it, you know. It, I, well, I guess since Mr. Mr. Helms said, everyone here, we would prefer in-person, I feel that I need to come out and say, not me, you know, so to say, if I let that sit, then people go, yeah, we, when we also wanted it to be in-person because that's preference, I mean, I, I can make arguments for one. I think VTM is better be one of them. It is the fact that we have more attendance regardless of how people feel about it. At least they're there and they're voting, you know, 20% more, you know. But, and I hesitate to talk about the science, you know. But it's not really clear that we are getting good numbers on the, the infection rate, you know. And so, so I'm, I'm a little hesitant to say that things aren't worse than they look from, from the numbers, you know. But, but as Mr. Helms said, though, if people test positive, you know, then they're out. They're not going to be allowed in the meeting. And, and if the meeting is only in person, you know, then they're out of town meeting. And, and given that we do have an alternative that will allow them to participate fully in the process. And that'll be the reason that I'll vote for it, you know, regardless of how I feel personally about town meeting because, because I will defer me to the way the majority wants to, to meet, as I will on this board to meet up. And so, so I'm not going to dictate me how we meet. It's really going to be a matter of how most of us want to meet and, and but if there's a safety issue involved, as I've said repeatedly, I'm going to be conservative about that. So, so that's it for me. And I see Mr. Christian on his hand back up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to add that, I mean, there, there are plenty of reasons for preferring in-person. Plenty of reasons for preferring remote, like for instance, like convenience, like, like, like you mentioned. I just wanted to be clear that my decision was based on satisfying the legal criteria and answering that question as far as being able to safely assemble. But, but there are, there's, there's, there's plenty of other reasons to prefer one format versus the other, but that, that did not really factor into my decision here.
Thank you for making that clear. I appreciate that. You know, Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to offer my apology for, apology for my rhetorical excess. It is dangerous to say nobody in this room sees this differently because of course people do. And I should have realized that and I did not mean to try to box you, Mr. Chair. I respect your points of view and your preferences. And in fact, something I want to say is, you know, I was an early eighter and a better to virtual town meeting, as, as most of you know, and I think the platform does work and I think it is democratic. And I like the participation that we've seen. It is long and it's hard. Somehow it's all been harder to sit in your own chair than it is same amount of time at town meeting. It just is. Some of us like the social connection, but it's not bad, you know, and, and I think that we've seen that town meeting members, even those for whom the technology is not native and comfortable, have been able to participate and have a full voice. So I, you know, I want the residents in town to understand, I don't think this is the second best thing. I mean, it's, it's not my personal preference. And I think I hear that from some of my colleagues that it's more enjoyable and a better experience for, for some people, for many people in person. I think that, that the virtual town meeting environment as it's set up, or we're better at it now, we're practiced at it. And I have confidence, having started working kind of in a preliminary fashion with our moderator and understanding the system, you know, that he will guide us and lead us in a, in a way to, to have a good experience. And, you know, it won't, it won't be as happy as experiences for many people want, including some of my colleagues. But I think that we can get it done. And I just wanted to add those thoughts and add my appreciation for, to all of you for a good discussion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. It's so, you know, I think, oh, Mr. Christian, hand back up?
Sorry, just, just very briefly, I just wanted to point out to Mr. Helm's point that in discussions about planning for this year's town meetings, obviously, we've had to get started with the, the planning for virtual already because there wouldn't be time to wait for a decision type of this luck where so we speculate they have been moving forward with planning. And I've been looking to make changes to some of how we're conducting a virtual town meeting to give a better feel than we might have gotten in past years based on kind of the experience that we've had at the last two virtual town meetings. For instance, being able to have participants who are showing, are able to show their videos if they, if they choose to opt into that. So we could actually see people as they're speak participants, like town meeting members as, as they're speaking, as opposed to just like the, you know, a static image of them. So hopefully those sorts of efforts will help also optimizations and kind of transitions between speakers and how things like consent agenda are handled. So we, it has been pretty bumpy the last two times because we're doing it new. And so we have a lot of material to learn from. And I've been spending a lot of time studying how things have gone, kind of like my own sort of postmortem on the last two virtual town meetings to try to learn from those. So we can kind of smooth out a lot of rough edges, which hopefully help out with the experience. And I hope that's effective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christiana. Mr. Heim?
I'm sorry to keep interrupting the board's discourse. Chair, I just wanted to note just for the public edification, it's in the moderator's letter. The proposal is to have the town meeting on a combination of the ZPato platform. It's the same platform that we used last year alongside essentially the Zoom software. So it's would be identical to the way that previous, I shouldn't say identical, it should be very similar to the way that previous virtual town meetings were conducted. And it's just important to make that known for folks. It's in the moderator's letter. It'll be as part of the notice as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Hassan. And so not seen any desire for any more discussion on a motion means to authorize a virtual town meeting made by Mrs. Mahan and seconded by Mr. Helms and Mr. Heim. Can you take a vote? Take a roll call?
Mr. Heard? Mr. Helmet?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's a three, one vote. Mr. DeCoursey was not present.
Thank you, Mr. Heim. And, and once again, you know, the select board's office will do as you suggested or, or you directed a few minutes ago. So thank you, Mr. Christiana. And I think at this point, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is discussion of a potential date for virtual town day. No, just out. So, Mr. Heard?
Yep, let me pull it up. I mean, this is really wonderful. It's only two days that it can be. It's whatever the, the board prefers, but it is, so in September, be Saturday. Making sure I'm in the right spot here. All right. So you get, it would either be the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth. My preference is the seventeenth. Just because it's the third Saturday in, in September, which I think is generally our, our the, when we schedule town day. So I put that to the board to have town day on September seventeenth, 2022.
So
this should be an easier discussion.
I think so. It, so, so then you put that to the board as a motion?
Um, I guess, yeah, I'll move that we have our town day, annual town day on September seventeenth, 2022.
Yeah, Mrs. Mahan?
Um, can someone, either the chair, Mr. Heard or someone else, just remind me when Rosh Hashanah in Yom Kippur is?
Well, Mrs. Mahan, I don't know the dates, you know, exactly, but I do know that those states, I mean, both dates are completely clear of that period because when we were having early discussions about this, I looked to see if there would be any conflict with either those states or, or the range between those states. And then, and there was no conflict between the seventeenth and the twenty-fourth. But I think in this time period, Mr. Chaplain has, has gotten the answer.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rosh Hashanah begins on Monday, September twenty-sixth. And I'm not seeing, Yom Kippur begins on Wednesday, October fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second Mr. Heard's motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Helms?
Thank you to Mr. Heard for seizing the initiative and for your work and happy to support this. Thank you.
Yes. And, yeah, Mr. Heard?
And I was just going to say, another reason to not do the twenty-fourth is that you don't want to take the thunder away from your birthday, Mr. Helms.
Very kind of you, Mr. Heard.
Well, well, what would be better than having town day on your birthday? I mean,
I can think of some things that would be better than that.
Man, I mean, well, not this town day. This town day is going to be something else, you know? So you want to see it. We don't know what that something else is going to be, but it's going to be worth seeing. So, 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 yeah, I'm, 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 I'm looking forward to it. It's going to be, it is going to be something else. Even Mr. Heard and I, we'll, we'll figure it out. And, yeah, let's see what world we're in, being come the, in the September, man, I mean, things just have a way of changing almost like every thirty days here. Different world. So, so, so I, yeah, I'll be happy to support this. Me, so on a motion to have town day on September seventeenth by Mr. Heard and seconded by Mrs. Mahan, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Helmet?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. DeCoursey. I mean, Jesus, Mr. Diggins, sorry.
No problem. So now, now I'm wiser. Yes, definitely.
Aegis.
So, so I think we're, we're moving on to item number seven, correspondence received. And that would be petition. The petition signatures in support of the Mass Ave Vision Zero campaign in Arlington. It was a letter submitted by Phil Goff, Ms. Goff and Mrs. Gibson, co-chairs of Everyear Arlington Level Streets Coalition. And so I will recommend that that be taken up by the town manager and I would like to work with him and consulting with the petitioners and anyone else that is interested in the issue, the issues that raised.
Over, refer this to the town manager?
Second that?
Thank you. And so I don't need to take a vote on this, right? I do. Okay. Thank you. So, so, so I was moved by, by Mr. Heard and seconded by, by Mr. Helms. Now, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Helmet?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. So I think this is going to be it for the meeting because I didn't put new business on the agenda. Can we, can we do that anyways, Mr. Mr. Heim?
Yes, as long as there's not a deliberation taking place.
All right. So, so great. So then let's start with Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No new business.
Mr. Heard?
No new business.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes, very briefly, and it'll save myself a call to the manager. Could I through you, Mr. Chair, or make the request to you to oversee if the town manager, I think at the last meeting or the meeting before that, under new business, spoke briefly about Congresswoman Clark's visit to, I guess, to Arlington as well as the designation of some federal opera funds. And I believe he stated that the town of Arlington would sort of be the overseer or auditor of those funds. So my request would be if, if the board could be provided with a couple of paragraphs of exactly all the information we need to know. Because I do see that one of our colleagues from Lexington has submitted a request on behalf of, I believe it might, but it might not apply to the money that the Congresswoman has gotten for federal opera funding for their leaf blowing. Or that may be something separate. So I'd like an explanation so that we all know what these funds are. I just want to register that I think it was a major oversight. I, I had spoken with the Congresswoman's office that I did let them know the board was not aware that Congresswoman Clark was coming to Arlington. So it wasn't a select board sort of snub. And I'd like to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So potential new business is that we I know that the previous chair had brought up that we might look at some articles, made that the redevelopment board wanted us to chime in on, and so that wasn't on today's agenda, but I am considering putting that on the agenda for, for the twentieth. And then we will make, it won't be in our report, but we will somehow communicate in what be determined, you know, at that meeting to town meeting. So that's it. At this point, I see Mr. Heim nodding his head approving, approving. So, okay. And so, yeah, Mr. Mr. Helms?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the chair discretion, oftentimes when new business, we invite the town manager if he hasn't, has any new business to offer.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Helms.
Thank you for that, Mr. Helms. No, I, I don't have any new business tonight, but thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. And so I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn. So thank you, Mr. Heard. Second. From Mr. Helms. Thank you, Ms. Helms. Also, Mr. Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Helmet?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Yes.
It's unanimous vote. Good night.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.